Let's go over Revelation six and read our passage, which will be verse nine through seventeen. So this is the fifth seal. "When he opened the fifth seal, I saw under the altar the souls of those who had been slain for the word of God and for the testimony which they held. And they cried with a loud voice, saying, 'How long, O Lord, holy and true, until you judge and avenge our blood on those who dwell on the earth?'" Then a white robe was given to each of them, and it was said to them that they should rest a little while longer, until both the number of their fellow servants and their brethren, who would be killed as they were, was completed. Now, there is a lot to unpack right here, because there is a, well, I say this all the time, but really, there is a lot of unknowns, and there's a lot of interpretations, a lot of opinions on interpretations when it comes to these things, alright? So, the fifth seal was called "The Cry of the Martyrs," that's what was in the margin in my Bible, "The Cry of the Martyrs." Now, we're gonna delve into this and look, and, but I want to share this, though every believer in Christ will be removed from the earth at the rapture of the church, many people will come to faith in Christ after the rapture, right? So I hope you all believe that, I think we all do, and we all agree on that, because, why? Because it tells us they are. So this is where difference of interpretations kinda gets a little bit different, because I cannot tell you how many commentaries I've read, and there's not a lot on this right here, I'm gonna tell you, there's not a lot written, and I was like, oh boy, because some of them, there's a lot written, and you've got a lot of information to look through, but on these, there's not a lot written down. So, let's start with this, he says, "I saw under the altar," the souls of those who have been slain for the word of God. Now, "under the altar," that these souls were under the altar emphasizes that their lifeblood was poured out as an offering to God, so symbol, okay? Symbolism, and the idea, he said, is drawn from Leviticus four seven, because that's where they took the blood, remember, of the sacrifice. So there's a little symbolism in this, that they're placed there, right, under the altar, and that's what Leviticus says, "And he shall pour the remaining blood at the base of the altar of the burnt offering." So this goes back to Old Testament worship, temple worship, versus what? The symbol, the picture of it, kinda the, I don't know, maybe it's the fulfillment of it, some of that, you know? Christ was the fulfillment of a lot of the sacrifice, but maybe this is some fulfillment of some of the things that, the instructions they gave to Moses and him about temple worship. I don't know, that's up for debate, but I love it how you read this in here, and you think, oh, well, it references back to the Old Testament, that's what that meant, that's God was looking ahead, because he's God, we can't outthink him or understand sometimes, but this was really, this was really interesting to me. But who are these souls? This is the debate. There's a lot of debate on this, I'm gonna give you what I understand about this and some reasons why, but I'm open for anybody that has anything different. Again, I'm not gonna argue over this stuff, I don't feel like we should argue over it, but I think we should try to understand it the best we can, and ask God to give us a piece about it, and that's what I tried to do with this. So, "Though every believer in Christ will be removed from the earth at the rapture of the church," again, many people will come to faith in him, these are the people who will not take the mark nor worship the beast, and it will cost them their lives. This is interpretation number one, which is probably, I don't know, Chris, did you say it's the most popular interpretation?
I would say it's probably the most popular.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't really know which way to believe on that, because, well, the reason I say that is because in Jesus' day, he talks about the blood of Abel crying out, you know? And Abel was way, way back in history, you know, and the Bible says that life is in the blood, that life has been poured out for Christ, in one sense, until the end of everything, there's not gonna be justice for that soul, you know, there's not gonna be vengeance on those ones that killed, you know? And so, the altar, it talks about, you know, in my understanding, or my thinking, which is not always right by any means, you know, the temple in heaven, it has no need for altar, because there's not any more sacrifice.
Right.
You know, Christ was a sacrifice, so in my thinking, I'm thinking that they're, like the Bible says, hidden in Christ, you know, that his blood is what has been poured out for them, and that's, to my way of thinking, that's what they're under that blood, and they're still crying out, like many of us do today, you know, how long until God sets everything right? How long is it gonna be before we are being, as God says, vengeance is mine, I will be paid, you know, and so, I say, I think of it as those ones who died for Christ, whether it's just those in tribulation or throughout history, but I think that they're waiting on God to set things right on their behalf, which, you know, we know that he's gonna do that, even though sometimes I say it seems long, kind of, you know?
Yeah, it does, and so that's why I'm saying, there's so many interpretations of this, I'm giving you one basically, but just discuss all of it a little bit, because me and Brother Donald were talking about that earlier, about the Old Testament saints, you know, the same thing, because there's not a real clear picture on that either. So there's a lot of unknowns in this, but it's worth just exploring it, because I think it's, what I gather out of this all, whoever it is, really is, it doesn't matter to me in the end, because it's what the meaning of this is during this seal, about, yes, he's a holy God, and he's a just God, he's a loving God, but he's also, because he is holy and just, he must do what? He must deal with injustice, if that makes sense. So he's the only one who's worthy to do that, and he's been holding that wrath out of love until the end, and then it's all coming out, if that makes sense to you. And so, two, the way we look at this, this is kind of, it's either early tribulation or right before the beginning of a lot of things, because all of this is happening, and again, we think it's in chronological order, but do we know time periods, and we don't really know time periods, because the tribulation, according to the Scripture, is gonna last seven years, but there's a lot leading up to it, that is what I think John's trying to explain. So again, there's a lot of unknowns in this, but I like to explore it. So, the word soul is a reference to the immaterial part of man, and I know most everybody knows that, but it is used interchangeably in the Bible with the term spirit a lot of times. So, again, this is just a representation of what? This is not an actual flesh body up here in heaven. This refers to the total person as a rational being that lives forever. In other words, our soul will endure, everybody's soul's gonna last forever, whether with God or without God, so this is what we have to understand, that a lot of people say, well, that's just, that's just a spirit thing, and it's not, no, it's real, that soul is real. Another says, "These are souls because they do not have a resurrected body," now this is one thought, okay? These are souls because they do not have a resurrected body as yet, because that resurrection will not occur until the close of the tribulation. That's another thought on that, okay? So, again, their bodies, and I think I've touched on this before, and I know this is something that, when I understood this a little better, I was like, oh, I got it now, I understand it a little bit better. When the rapture of the church happens, we're gonna do what? Everybody in the ground's gonna do what? It's believers gonna go. These people that, after that, that die, are gonna have to wait till the end for God to resurrect their bodies, and that's what they're talking about. So their soul will be in heaven, but their body's not gonna be there yet, if that makes sense to everybody? So think of it in those terms, because that's kinda where, that's where Revelation leads us a little bit.
Let me make one.
Go ahead, sir.
We tend to think different from God, time, his timing can be just, that thousand years can go bang, you know what I mean? So a time period between all that seem like just bang, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's what I told somebody, I said, you know, we talk, everybody's got their thing about, well, this is the time, and this is the time, and I said, well, okay, I'll throw one at you then, I answered this question for me. Bible says that, you know, a thousand years is but a day. I said, no, so think about that, when we say, well, seven years of tribulation, is that really seven years, or is that a longer period of time? I was like, throw that at people. It's kinda like the old joke, huh? You know? He said, uh, God said, about the joke about the guy asking for the stuff from God, y'all heard that? And he said, uh, you know, a day is but a thousand years, is that true? He goes, yeah, and he said, I want this, and he said, well, you're gonna have to wait a day, have to wait a thousand years, what God said. Kinda like the guy that said, let's have a contest, right? See if we can create man, and the guy started getting to dirt, and God said, no, 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 get your own dirt. So there's things we don't understand, right? But he's the creator of it all, so he can do whatever he wants to do with it. Alright, I digress there, I'm sorry. So, again, this theory, the martyrs of Revelation are described as being under the altar, again, another reference, because the Old Testament priests poured the blood of the sacrifices there, so I just referenced that again really quickly, again, thinking about these people and setting this, kinda setting this tone up. Now, Dr. Jeremiah had this thought, he said, "In the tribulation period, martyrdom will be common everywhere, unlike today." So, yeah, there's been a lot through history, we know that a lot of the disciples were martyred, a lot of the Christians were martyred, a lot of people are martyred in a lot of countries, have been martyred, they've been, they've been either, you know, whatever, whatever the way they did, they died for the gospel of Jesus Christ for their faith. A lot of people die today, but nothing compared to this period is what his belief is on that. On the Mount of Olives, Jesus foretold the persecution to come, so this is a reference in the New Testament where Jesus was talking about, from everything I understand, the end times, talking about the coming of the Son of Man. So, that's in Matthew twenty-four eight through ten. Zechariah the prophet spoke of the day of tribulation as a time when two-thirds of the entire Jewish population would be killed. That's a lot. So, the Old Testament and the New Testament do what? Prophecy of the end. So Jesus spoke about that, you know, when he said, you know, he'll be given up, and you know, and he'll be persecuted, and all these things, you'll be hated by men, for my sake, you know? He's trying to tell people what? Just hold on, just endure, just endure. So I guess today we think about persecution, we don't have a clue what persecution is compared to what it's gonna be in this day, I don't think. I think it's gonna be, and it's almost like a, it reminds me of, I hate to use his name all the time, Hitler, what he did to the Jewish people, and even the people that didn't wanna follow him, that were not of his race and all that, you know? It was a tough period, and it's gonna be the same way, if you don't believe it, you don't live it, follow it, guess what? You're gonna be gotten rid of, put in prison, killed, executed, I don't know, it's gonna be a bad time. "And they cried out with a loud voice," it said, "these believers will cry out to God, asking him to render justice," like Chris said, "for all the devoted who have been murdered during the tribulation," right? For all of them, again, we don't know the period, but this is just something to reference, to say they were ready for what? God to do what? Vengeance, to wreak justice. And I guess growing up, you know, we talk about, why God, don't you do this, why don't you stop this, or why don't you fix this, or why don't you get rid of those people? And so, you know, the more you grow in Christ, and you learn that, you know, we were just as ugly in our sin as they are, when we were lost and separated from Christ, but it's a hard thing sometimes to watch the suffering and people go through things, but I know God knows best, again, we don't understand his mind, we can't understand his mind, but I think about this too, there's a difference in justice and vengeance. Ever thought about that? I mean, I know movies say it, but some people want vengeance, and some people want justice. We want vengeance sometimes more than we do justice, because if we really wanted God's justice, all of us would be guilty, but because of Christ, we don't have to be guilty, we can be freed of that, but I thought it was neat the way the writer said, "him to render justice," so that's, that was a key point there when he said that to me, because the writer's saying, they didn't want, yeah, they wanted God's justice, but they didn't want just vengeance, they wanted justice for what had been done. And so, then it goes down to tell us they were given white robes, and we see this referenced a lot in Revelation, I'm gonna talk about that some, and you have to forgive me, my slides don't work right, I was tired last night, if you're seeing when I was trying to do this work. But a white robe, in the New Testament, the symbolism of white garments is further developed in the book of Revelation, right? The saints are depicted wearing white robes, signifying their purity and victory over sin, right? And people, people, people scratch their head a lot of time when they read these things, and it reads, you know, you wash your robes in the blood of the lamb, and people think, washing it in blood, well, how's a white robe gonna get? But it's the symbolism of it again, it's the purity, the symbol of it, right? And that blood does what? Covers our sin, washes us, makes us pure. So, in Revelation seven, the next chapter, it says, "Then one of the elders addressed me, and he said, 'These in white robes, who are they, and where have they come from?' That's what John said. So I replied, 'Sir, you know,' and he told me, 'These are the ones who have come out of the great tribulation. They have washed their robes and made them white in the blood of the lamb,'" and that's the verse that goes with that, but it's hard for people to get that picture to grasp, how do you take blood and put it on something white in our world and make it clean? You can't, it's impossible. Look, I wear, I have to wear a white shirt a lot now at work, and I hate a white shirt worse than I do anything, because it does what? Picks up every stain, and it's hard to get them out, isn't it? You gotta bleach it, do all this stuff, that's the way our lives are when we're born, it's like we're born white robe, but sin does what? Dirties us up and spots us up, there's nothing that can take that away except his blood, so his blood is like the bleach that we use today to try to get something white, if that makes sense? That's the picture I like, that's the best way I can explain it, other people probably explain that better, but it is, Chris, go ahead.
It says that our sins are scarlet, the Bible never says that our sins are black.
Nope.
It says they're scarlet, which is a deep red.
Right.
When you put red on red, it cancels out, you know, it doesn't say the robe is white until after you washed them in the blood of the lamb, the green red.
Right.
They were stained with that same red, and it cancels out.
Yeah, you're right, but it's so hard to try to explain it to people sometimes, like, wait a minute, a white robe dipped in blood, kind of, but again, symbolism of it, the symbolism of it, I think it's just, it's just awesome.
Well, you know, the streets are gold, and it says, "Another place that the streets of gold will be crystal clear," so you're just using that with what you're talking about, see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it is, because, you know, raw gold and raw silver are what? Impure, natural, until you did what? Heat them up, put them in the fire, purify them. So, again, talking about the white robes and the dress, and this may also signify that these souls have just arrived in heaven, going back to the ideal that there's some early post-rapture believers or whatever, okay? So this is another thought on this, right? Because they just got there, and they were given their robes then, or they were cleansed then. So again, talking about, these are all just thoughts, alright? Things that I read, things that the Lord spoke to me, throwing them out there. White garments also signify divine approval and glory, so there's a lot of meanings for this in the Bible. During the Transfiguration, Jesus' garments became what? Radiant, exceedingly white, as no longer on earth could lighten him, I love that, when I read that, that was in Mark, but it's what? It was like, his whole, his whole image changed before them, kinda like Moses, right? When he was in God's presence, it was so radiant. Now, do we know exactly what it was? No, but they gave the best description they could. So again, maybe that, that's why he said, maybe that was a signal of divine approval and glory, because we're gonna do what? We're gonna live in God's glory, we don't deserve it, but we're gonna be given it and live in His glory. But this event revealed Christ's divine nature, right? It was His true nature, in a way, to me, and the glory of His kingdom witnessed by Peter, James, and John. Remember, they wanted to build, they like, hey, woo, they just, they had, wouldn't you love to been there and see that exchange? They're like, wow! But he told them what? Not yet, you hadn't really seen it yet. "Without Jesus, though, our robes, our righteousness, would be like filthy rag," that's what Isaiah says. So that's the picture to me, that's the most important, the symbol of it is, when we accept Christ, our filthy rags are clean, and we're acceptable before God, where we can enter into His presence, we're made clean enough to go before Him. So they got their robes, and then it goes down, it says, "It was said to them that they should rest a little while longer," or wait a little while longer, depending on your interpretation, so the saints were instructed to wait. How long, how long would they wait? I don't know, but he did tell them, "They had to wait until both the number of their fellow servants and their brethren, who would be killed as they were, was completed." Now what is that number? Depends on what you, what path you take down through here, whether it's a hundred and forty-four thousand, or whatever. There's a lot of, again, there's a lot of interpretation, but then I like this statement, it said, "This may mean that they should wait until all God's appointed martyrs are killed," and he knows, "and then bring them home till the end comes." Again, there's a lot, there's so many unknowns about this to explore, but the point is, it's, you know, you wouldn't think this, he's released the four horsemen, as we talked about last week, right? This already started doing some things on the earth, and then this fifth seal comes up, and you're like, wait a minute, that's kind of an odd place for it to me, anybody else get that when you read it? Because you're thinking this is all gonna be vengeance, but it's a picture of what? God's patience, number one to me, God's mercy, I guess you'd say, and how He's still giving opportunities for people to come to Him and accept His Son. That's amazing to me, that's just amazing to me. So, he was just telling them what? Hold on, it's coming, just be patient, right? It's kinda like, you know, it's kinda like the old famous saying in the car, are we there yet? That's cute the first couple times, huh? And after a while, it's like, I'll tell you when we're gonna get there, right? Right? When we get there, we'll get there! But God didn't say that, he just said, hold on a little bit longer, hold on, because you look, you're here, and we got all eternity to spend, so just be patient, because I have what? I have some more down there that I want to come to know me.
I don't mean this to sound sacrilegious.
No, no, go ahead, brother!
They're in heaven, and yet God's still saying for them to rest. In essence, he said, you still need to have faith in me, that I'm gonna do what I said I would do, you know?
True.
And I said, I don't have, I don't understand this, and I would not, by any means, I say, be sacrilegious, but, you know, that's the same message that he gives us, encouraging that faith now, and it's that, you know, I said, it's coming, and he's gonna do it, you know? I've had God, feel like God spoke things to me that it's coming, and it's like, they ain't got here yet, you know? Yeah, you said this was coming.
Yeah.
Been saying it's coming, you know, but that's what he's saying, is to wait, you know, and even in that moment, I mean, they're in God's presence, they're in heaven, they're seeing, experiencing all these things, and yet, God's plan is not ultimately fulfilled yet, at least today, and there's still, there's still a place for faith, there's still a place for you to trust me and believe that I'm gonna do what I said I would do.
Yes, amen to that, amen, because again, you think, well, they're there, they're done, but they're not, because he's telling them what? Just wait, just wait. God is not willing that any should perish, Bible tells us that, but that all should come to eternal life. So this is another thought, if he shortened the tribulation period to just a few months, it would greatly limit the number of people who repent and come to the saving knowledge of Jesus before His return. So again, he's done what? He's lengthened it to do what? Give people some more opportunity to come to know Him. It's hard to understand that to me, you know, it's like, you've put up with all this, you put up with all of us, and you've done this, and then you're gonna call your church home, but you're still gonna do this, you're gonna have, you're gonna have justice, right? But you're still gonna give those people an opportunity, still. Does the same thing today, it's just not in this setting necessarily with the world collapsing. Again, you're gonna have that Antichrist rise up, right? And he's gonna have all the answers for everybody, and he's gonna bring everybody around and hug them up, and they all gonna sing kumbaya and make s'mores every night, and it's gonna be, you know, paradise on earth for three and a half years, and then he's gonna flip the switch on them. A lot of them gonna say, what have I done? I think a lot of them's gonna think that when the rapture happens, because they're gonna remember, and I don't know if all people, and I know this is getting way out there, y'all, I'm just, it's the way my mind works, I'm sorry, how many people, when the rapture comes, are gonna start calling out to Christ? Think about that, people that's heard the call, rejected the call, or maybe walked away when they were young because of something, never accepted Christ, but knew, right, were raised, they're gonna start crying out to Him. I don't know, I know y'all seen those videos before, you know, they up there all over the internet, I'm trying to think what, who preached that sermon, but even though it was about the rapture, and there was one of the pictures, you know, there's people leaving and all this stuff, one of them was a church, if you remember that setting, inside a church house, a bunch of people left, there was still people there. Because being part of the church don't make you saved, except that Jesus Christ saves you, so that's my point, you know? I think there's gonna be a lot that maybe didn't, never accept Him, never understood it, that they're gonna go crying out, and what's he gonna do? He's gonna hear them, it's gonna be tough, but I think he's gonna hear them, and is he gonna bring them right home? No, I don't know, this may be them, this may be some of them that's just arriving, I don't know. But there's a lot of unknowns, but my point is, he's so great and loving that he's still gonna give people an opportunity during all of this to come to know Him, because the longer God waits, the more His saints, right? The ones that are gonna be here, there gonna be some here after that, right? Get saved, can share the gospel and bring others into God's kingdom, because that's what the witnesses are gonna do, is go and spread the gospel, where that's for a later subject, but I know some of you know that already. Matthew Henry said, "When this number," again, back to this number, the number being fulfilled, "when this number is fulfilled, God will take a just," use that word again, "just and glorious revenge," he called it, "glorious revenge, a just and glorious revenge upon their cruel persecution, cruel persecutors. He will recompense tribulation to those who trouble them, and to those that are troubled, full and uninterrupted rest." So that, there you go, what's he gonna do? He's gonna do what? Gonna bring them home, and he's gonna give them what? Rest, but there's gonna be a lot take place during that time. So, that's all I have for this, I'm sure I was waiting on a big wrap-up, wasn't you? But I'll have one, because y'all, there is so much I don't understand about this, but I'm just trying to give you a flyover of what I may be interpreting, but anybody got any closing thoughts or comments?
I would say, whoever talks about, when they were killed in the first verse, it says, "They were killed, also they were faithful in Him," and it says, "in the testimony that they held." And you go to Revelation twelve, it says, "That's how we overcome Satan," it says, "they overcome Satan by the blood of animals," with their testimony, you know? I think God puts a high value on the testimony that we have.
Yeah.
You know, these ones, they were killed because they wouldn't, they wouldn't change their testimony, you know, they believed in God, and they testified of that, not just with their words, but with their actions.
Right.
It says, "When the testimony that they held," to me, that means like they held on to it, that they, they didn't just profess it, but they held it to the end, you know, and I think God puts a high value on our testimony, and I think we should put that same kind of value on it, to guard it, protect it, you know, to make sure that we have that testimony, that's what I say, lines up with that, and I'm willing to hold that, I'm willing to hang on to that, whatever he wants me to do.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes that gets a little tough, you know, we think, like you were talking about persecution, you know, we get scared thinking somebody's gonna make fun of us or something, you know? And there's people dying every day for their faith, because they won't do something as simple as say, I don't believe in Jesus, I go back to being a Muslim, a Hindu, or whatever, you know, and they give their life for that, and, you know, we should not be... And they give their life for that, and, you know, we should not be, we don't face anything like that, we should not be crazy. And so, but we also have to know that the testimony that God has given us is something that is gonna be tried sooner or later.
Amen.
One or another, it's gonna be tried, and it doesn't matter if it's me facing death or me facing ridicule. What matters is, do I hold to that testimony? Do I, do I hold to it, or do I back up on it, or do I change it, or give it up, or whatever? You know, and I think that's what, you know, God is looking for. Sunday, I was preaching about the parable of the talents, you know, and in that parable, you read that, it didn't matter who got five, who got two, who got one. And honestly, it didn't matter what they did, what God was looking for is, were you faithful? He says, "You've been faithful in this world." I'm not gonna put you in a lot, you know, faithfulness is what he's looking for. And, and so I think that value that he puts on that testimony is shown in these ones that gave their life for him. He said, that, that's part of his testimony about them, is that they held their testimony.
Yeah. Wow, yeah.
You know, uh, if it, if the rapture was to take place while we're in this, now, if it was here, we'll say hundreds of years from now, I can't say. But like, if it happened, like, we'll say, here pretty quick. Uh, we'll say Brother Delman's cutting a guy's hair, Brother Delman goes on up. That other guy is left there waiting on his haircut. There would be a lot of people start crying out for the Lord, that's what I thought, man.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Somebody just got in my barber shop, that's all I know. Right? They can have it.